As long as it's dramatic.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I'm sorry. And welcome to City Council's work session. Today is Tuesday, October 15, 2019. My name is Wanda R.D. Williams. I'm the chair. And of all, City Council are the members. I am now calling this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Mr. Petrofsky, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Mr. Majors is excused. He'll be here shortly.
Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you. Moving on to committee business. We will handle committee business first, and that would be the presentation by Capital Regional Water regarding stormwater fee proposal. Excuse me. Thank you. We will handle committee business first, and then we'll move on to any public comment. We certainly don't want the public waiting around, and then continuing on with our committee business next. So now, I'll turn it over to Capital Regional Water, our executive director, Charlotte. Good afternoon, or good evening. Oh, you're going to turn it over to Mr.?
Thirty seconds, and then you don't have to listen to me anymore.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of council for having us here this evening. Bit of information we'd like to share, there's been a lot of conversation, obviously, about this particular topic. We wanted to just come before you this evening, give a little bit more background, tell you a bit about how the program came together, where we stand now, and where we see things moving forward. I think everybody probably knows the folks at the table, but just to introduce and make sure we're all aware.
Thank you, I would appreciate that, so we can have that on record. We are, matter of fact, we are recording this, and we're doing it live, so that the residents of the city of Harrisburg can hear the proposal as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Karowski.
Mark Karowski, board member at Capital Regional Water. Charlotte Katzenmoyer, our CEO. Claire Mulhart, who is in charge of our City Beautiful H2O program. And John Masrakio with Raftellus, who is one of our consultants, leading a significant part of the, kind of the number crunching side of this effort. We've got a host of folks here in the background as well, from the leadership and the board, kind of for moral support, but also to answer questions should need be. So with that, I will turn it over to Charlotte to start us through. We were planning on somewhere in the thirty-ish, thirty to forty minute range for the presentation. If you want us to keep it short, we can talk a little faster. Certainly ask questions when you have them, or if you want to wait till the end, either way is fine with us.
Well, Mr. Karowski, I don't want you to talk too fast, because I want to make sure that the residents of the city of Harrisburg hear everything that you have to say.
Fantastic.
But I don't want you to drag it through as well.
Certainly. We will be concise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pull us a little closer, make sure you can hear. So we're here to talk about who we are as Capital Regional Water. Many residents may not, may not know us. We also want to talk about what we've done over the last six years since Capital Regional Water was formed, and took over from the Harrisburg Authority. And then we want to talk about where the future lies for Capital Regional Water. And part of that is rate restructuring, and we'll talk about how our rate restructuring is more equitable and covers the cost of the stormwater costs that are envisioned in the City Beautiful H2O program. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in detail. This was working. All right. So, so Capital Regional Water manages, owns and manages-
Excuse me. Would you mind speaking up? I don't think everyone can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, that you can't hear? Thank you.
Okay. So Capital Regional Water manage, owns and manages the drinking, regional assets, including the drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater facilities, that are included in, not just for services for the city of Harrisburg, but we also serve the municipalities surrounding Harrisburg, including Pembroke, Paxton, Stilton Borough, and Susquehanna, Swatera, and Lower Paxton Township. This includes, our workforce includes thirty-two city residents, and an additional forty-three others that reside within our service area, for a total of one hundred and nineteen, one hundred and nineteen employees for Capital Regional Water. We have, the tenure of these employees, just on the water and wastewater side, include over a thousand years of experience on the water and wastewater side, which does not include the administrative and management staff. So just to talk about some of the assets, so that you know, our wastewater system is located here, and we're very proud of the advanced wastewater treatment facility, which hopefully many City Council members will be able to tour this Saturday. But the, it's state-of-the-art technology, and it manages and treats all of the wastewater from the city, as well as those townships that I just listed. So it is a regional plant, so it, it serves many, you know, many municipalities, in addition to the city of Harrisburg. So it's just another aerial view. And of course, the crystal clear water that our employees, that have a tenure of six-hundred-and-ninety-three years, that work at the treatment plant, they're very proud of how clean the effluent is that, that leaves our treatment plant. Our water plant is also located just outside of, just on the edge of the city of Harrisburg. It, we also have, at Reservoir Park, we have some standing tanks that take the treated, treated water from the drinking plant, drinking water plant before it is put into the system. And of course, the gem, or the jewel of our system, is the DeHart reservoir. The forefathers of Harrisburg that, that purchased this land and created this reservoir really, really knew what they were doing, and created an asset that is really, you know, something that is envied by many water systems throughout the state. So it is really a jewel that Harrisburg should be very proud of. I'm sorry, this is not working. So, so just looking at the transition from the Harrisburg Authority to Capital Regional Water, sorry. So in 2013, we took over and began managing all the assets that I have mentioned. In 2014, we started implementing an asset management plan. Many of the assets, many of the underground pipes, there was not really a good mechanism of knowing both where they are and the condition of those assets. So we began implementing a GIS, or geographical information system, or mapping feature, and an asset management system, so that we could determine the, the critical nature of those assets, as well as the condition, so that we could prioritize which water and wastewater pipes needed to be replaced. Then we started negotiating a consent decree with EPA, along with the city. And that partial consent decree required certain projects to be undertaken, and one of those being an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant, to the tune of forty million dollars, to upgrade that to meet the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction or Nutrient Reduction Plan, as well as upgrade, really, assets that had outlived their design life. And then we started the community greening plan, which involved a long-term control plan, or preparing a long-term control plan, that would meet the regulatory requirements that EPA has set out for combined sewer communities. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. But that was started in 2016, about eighteen months of planning and community engagement. We'll talk about the meetings a little bit later on, but there were many meetings that, that we had, that we engaged the community in, to determine what's the best course of, of reducing or combined sewer overflow, as well as meeting the other regulatory requirements that EPA requires. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, community greening plan. But then in 2018, we began some other major capital improvements at the treatment plant, as well as improvements on the water side, but that's not really purview in this meeting. But then we developed the City Beautiful H2O plan, which rolled in the community greening plan into that long-term control plan, to meet those regulatory requirements, and meet the partial consent decree requirements. And now, we're basically looking at how to fund that plan moving forward, and part of that plan is rate restructuring, and I'll talk about the stormwater fee a little bit later on. So our investment to date has been about a hundred and ten million dollars of projects since 2013, and you can see how those, how those capital improvements have traversed those last six years. We've cleaned every single catch basin, or stormwater inlet, within the system, and you can see how that has progressed over the years. We've televised and cleaned about half of all of the pipes, sewer pipes, within the system, and we have plans to complete that televising and condition assessment by the end of 2021. So again, that's part of the consent decree requirements that we're working under. There was a lot of deferred maintenance, as you are well aware, from previous administrations of the city, so we have a lot of catching up to do. Many utilities are, are working now just to reduce the combined sewer overflows. We have to do both. We have to upgrade our system, as well as reduce combined sewer overflows. Unfortunately, that upgrading our system comes at a much higher price now than had the city done it ten or twenty years ago. So we have that added cost, in addition to reducing combined sewer overflows. Whoops, sorry. So the process for developing the stormwater fee, again, I've talked about the regulatory compliance that we've had to meet for any combined sewer community. We also have the aging infrastructure that I just talked about, but we also have localized flooding. A lot of neighborhoods experience localized flooding, and just reducing combined sewer overflows will not address that localized flooding issue. So the green infrastructure program that we'll talk about a little bit later on, does twofold. It also helps reduce combined sewer overflows, but it helps with alleviating that localized flooding that many residents see in their neighborhood. Raftellus worked with Capital Regional Water, was hired by Capital Regional Water to complete a financial model, which is required as part of our consent decree, and we have John here, who's going to go into that a little bit more, that talks about, it's part of how much spending can we afford to do, without burdening our rate payers, to an extent that EPA has basically set a threshold. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, but that was, that's what we've been doing over the last couple of years. Raftellus and John does our rate setting on the water and wastewater side, so we hired them, him to also look at this, this financial model that's required. Defining the stormwater program, again, as I said before, we've, we completed the community greening plan, and rolled that into a long-term control plan that's required to reduce combined sewer overflows, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. And as I said, Raftellus has completed the report of how to equitably distribute this cost, and, and not continue increasing wastewater rates by having customers who aren't generating the stormwater, and having them to, having residents pay more than they should if we're just increasing wastewater rates. So it's a more equitable solution. So the problem, many of you know, many City Council members know that we have a combined sewer system, but residents may not understand the nuances of that, so this graphic just shows that a combined sewer system captures not just the sanitary sewage that's coming from buildings, but also all of the rainwater that comes off of the, off of the rooftops, as well as hard surfaces like pavement, and sidewalks, and roadways. So during moderate and to heavy rainfall, that combined sewage overflows at certain locations, fifty-eight to be exact in our system. At certain overflow locations, that combined sewage overflows into local streams, the Paxton Creek and the Susquehanna River, because it would overwhelm the treatment plant if we were to send all of that combined sewage to the treatment plant. So this is how a typical combined sewage system works. There are about seven hundred and seventy combined sewer communities across the country, and most of them are in the northeast part of the country. So in our system in particular, we can capture and treat about fifty-three percent of the combined sewage in a typical year. And this is how EPA looks at it. They look at, we have to do a lot of modeling to determine what is a typical year, where you receive an average amount of rainfall for this area. So on a typical year, we, we treat about fifty-three percent, or of, of the combined sewage, but we discharge about eight hundred million gallons, ninety percent of which is stormwater. So if you can imagine, all of that rainwater from all of the surfaces within the combined sewer community, within the combined sewer system, is getting into those pipes, it's very dilute, and that's when we overflow into those local waterways. So why is stormwater a problem? Well, first of all, it overwhelms the system, like I just mentioned, when we can't manage and treat all of that combined sewage at the treatment plant. But even in a, a system where it's a separate system, which is about half of the city, has a separate storm sewer system, it still collects a lot of pollutants from impervious surfaces. It causes flooding of base, and basement backups. It collects debris and floatables from, from all of that stormwater, that rainwater, and gets, finds its way to the, to the waterways. It causes property damage, and it floods, erodes streams and waterways. So even if we were not, if we, even if we didn't have a combined sewer system, even in the separate sewer areas of our system, it's still a problem. So EPA is mandating that even in those communities that have separate sewer systems, that they do something to mitigate the amount of stormwater that's getting into the local waterways. So stormwater in our system, we generate about one point six million gallons of annual combined sewer volume that enters our pipes. And again, as I said, we, we treat about fifty-three percent of that. And currently, our system can handle just over half of the volume with improvements to our system. We can raise that bar to eighty percent capture, just by improving our pipes, our pump stations, and, and some regulated, over, those regulated overflow locations that we, that we've talked about. So just by making improvements to our system, we're able to capture up, close to eighty percent. But EPA wants that level to be a lot higher, so we'll talk about how we're going to get there. So the solution to get us past that point is a program that CRW has developed, called the City Beautiful H2O Program. And we'll talk about some of the components of that, but the, the vast majority of that is by building green infrastructure throughout the city. You see some of that has already been constructed along Third Street, at various locations, with some of these bumpouts that you see in the lower, the lower right there, as well as the upper left. So rain gardens in bumpouts, which serve a dual purpose of traffic calming. So green infrastructure has lots of benefits, in addition to managing stormwater and reducing overflows. So porous pavement, whether it be in parking lots, or in playgrounds, or streets, within street paving, porous pavement can also manage a lot of stormwater by allowing it to, the stormwater to infiltrate into the ground, and using the natural system to allow that to infiltrate and regenerate the groundwater. So a lot of that stormwater, which tends to overwhelm our system, if it's captured before it gets into the pipes, and use, using natural systems to manage that, it's a lot more cost-effective than using engineered solutions, that I'll talk about a little bit later on. So how we evaluated all the different alternatives that's required by, by EPA in a long-term control plan, alternatives evaluation. The first, the first thing that we did was look at this baseline spending. And that, that's just improving our system, as I mentioned, just improving the existing pipes, the existing pump stations, and controls before to, to capture more into the sewer system. We can go from the fifty-three percent that I talked about, up to almost eighty percent, with a spending of just a little under two hundred million dollars. So this is what we call the baseline, and this is what we'll be working on over the next, what is it, short-term plus, seven to ten years. So this is the baseline, to basically capture as much as we can within the existing system. Then, sorry. So this is basically optimizing the existing system to restore integrity and resilience, and it significantly increases the CSO capture. Then, another alternative that we looked at was a parallel conveyance system, which is basically enhancing our conveyance, and increasing the wastewater treatment capacity at the treatment plant. So we investigated a range of interceptor pipes, upgrading pumping station capacities, and then improving the treatment plant to capture more and treat more of that combined sewage. But you can see that that cost above the baseline, basically gets, costs about one point six billion dollars, if we were to choose this control strategy. The next strategy that we looked at was, I'm sorry, I keep going the wrong way. The next strategy that we looked at was a deep tunnel storage system, but you can see that that cost, yes, it, it gets us to a hundred percent of capture, but the cost is between eight hundred million and one point two billion. So again, that control strategy, it's redeemed prohibitively expensive and not cost-effective. And this is based on treatment costs, project costs within the industry, that has, that many other communities have implemented similar strategy. So we took that cost, that project cost, and applied it to our system. Then we looked at sewer separation. That system, again, you can see the cost is even more cost prohibitive if we were to do that throughout our system. It is over one point two billion dollars for that system, so that was also deemed not Then we looked at decentralized stormwater management, which is part of the City Beautiful H2O Plan. It's localized green and gray storage, stormwater controls, and it was deemed the most cost-effective, and it is the backbone, or basically the basis, of the City Beautiful H2O Plan. So it's a combination of green and gray, mostly green infrastructure constructed throughout the city, as well as some gray stormwater controls that I'll, that we'll talk about in a minute, but basically localized storage within the system, where it is deemed cost-effective. And then the last control strategy that we looked at was a decentralized system, of basically local satellite storage, where it's cost-effective, and some sewer separation projects, where it's deemed effective. So the City Beautiful H2O Program basically uses Control Strategy Two, that I talked about with green and gray infrastructure, as well as the Control Strategy Two.
Excuse me, Charlotte, can I interrupt you? Because you went to centralized, decentralized stormwater, which is your green infrastructure, most effective strategy. What is the cost? You didn't give us the cost on that.
So that ranges from three hundred million up to, if it were just shy of six hundred, hundred, six hundred million.
Okay, and how about the local satellite storage that you're doing now?
So that one is, so you can, if you were to do that completely just by itself, without the Control Strategy Decentralized Two, that would range from about four hundred million up to one point five billion. So that's why it's a combination of the two of those.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry. I think that was important, that you should know that.
Yep, absolutely. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to John, to talk about the financial capability analysis that he conducted.
Great, thank you. So in developing the proposed City Beautiful Plan, you saw the different options there in terms of the, the cost. The financial capability of the authority, as well as the affordability of the residents within the city, was a significant factor in the design of the plan. What you see on the screen here is just one aspect of the financial capability assessment that, that we looked at, which is taking a look at the, the, the population and the, the income levels of city residents. And as you see here, thirty-two percent of the residents within the city have incomes below the federal poverty rate, which is, is a higher percentage than the US on average. It's a higher percentage than the state on average, and it's a higher percentage of the county on average. So that thirty-two percent corresponds to about an annual income for, for a resident of about seventeen thousand dollars for a family of two. So financial capability assessment was utilized, not only looking at incomes, but looking at poverty levels, and the, the cost of the City Beautiful Program, the cost of wastewater treatment and management, on, you know, what impact it'll have on, on customers of the city, in comparison to their income levels. And that is what EPA uses, it's what the Department of Environmental Protection uses to assess financial capabilities, one, one measure of financial capability, it's an important measure. And so when we look at the, the cost of the various options, we have projected the annual residential cost as a percentage of median household income, and what EPA looks at is if, if, if that cost, over time, rises to greater than two percent, so if the cost to a resident is greater than two percent of their median income, then EPA considers the community being in a high-burden state, so high financial burden. And if you're in high financial burden, you have the, EPA grants you some flexibility in terms of schedule relief, and sometimes gives you some relief in terms of regulatory, meeting regulatory requirements, and most of the time, it's, it's a schedule relief. You get more time to implement the program than you would otherwise have. So when you look at that, that cost as a percentage of income at the two percent high-burden threshold, where does that hit in terms of the, all these, these capital project alternatives, or program alternatives? This red line on the chart shows that. So the high-burden level hits when the capital costs of the program reach about three hundred and fifteen million dollars. Anything above that, and the, we're projecting that the residential impact goes above that two percent level. So that was, that was presented to the EPA as part of the negotiations for the, the program. And we have since, I guess, received some feedback, saying that they, they accept that that's the high-burden level. They haven't, they haven't gone beyond that in terms of time, timeline, on implementation, but they've at least expressed that they understand that, that there's a, there's a significant final, financial burden here. So in terms of, in terms of moving forward, the, the plan is to, is to recover some of that three hundred and fifteen million dollar cost with a stormwater fee, and a, and the remaining portion would be recovered under the wastewater, wastewater rates. And that is because some of these costs are purely sewer-related, infrastructure-related, and some of them are, are more stormwater-focused. The green infrastructure portion is, is an example of, of the stormwater portion. And so implementing a, a stormwater fee is, is an equitable solution. And so implementing a stormwater fee is, is an equitable solution, and it's, it's equitable because it means that you're recovering those costs from those that are causing the stormwater runoff. So properties that have more impervious area will pay more under the stormwater fee than those that, that don't have as much impervious area. And there's some other benefits associated with stormwater fee as well, and that includes having a dedicated revenue source for stormwater-related projects, providing an incentive for property owners to mitigate their stormwater bill. And they can mitigate their bill by performing or implementing measures that will reduce their stormwater runoff. And if they do that through the credit program that, that we're, we're planning to implement, they will have a reduced stormwater bill. So the basis of the stormwater fee, as I mentioned, is impervious area. Capital Region Water has measured each property impervious area in, in the city. So we've, they've gone out, and for every single parcel within the city, we've measured the, the amount of area associated with roofs, pavement areas, sidewalks, all of the impervious area has been, has been measured and quantified. And so the result of all that is, is a summary here. So what you'll, you'll see on the pie chart here is that about 23% of the impervious area within the city that was measured was, was from residential properties. About 50% was associated with non-residential, so commercial, non-tax-exempt properties. And then the remaining 27% approximately is from public, you know, public agencies and tax-exempt properties. So stormwater program costs, I mentioned that a portion of the City Beautiful program is, is targeted for recovery through a stormwater fee. We had laid out in our stormwater implementation plan was the identification of maintenance costs associated with the storm sewer system, maintenance on, on catch basins and storm, stormwater infrastructure, and also capital costs associated with implementing green stormwater infrastructure, and also maintaining that green infrastructure over time to make sure that it stays effective. So the total, the total at the bottom here, we're targeting somewhere around $5 million to start in terms of the, the revenue requirements associated with the stormwater fee. So talking about, a little bit about the stormwater fee structure and how the, the fee structure would be established, we, we have proposed a three-tier stormwater fee structure for residential customers. So the amount of that, of that flat fee that a resident would pay depends upon their, their property and how much impervious area that, that property has. So broke that into three tiers. So tier one is our small lots with 700 square feet of impervious area or less. They would pay half of the normal flat fee for the stormwater, stormwater fee. And that would correspond to, to about a $3.08 per month charge for, for those smaller, smaller lots. Tier two, which is, most, most residential customers would fall under tier two, and that's, those are lots with 700 to 2,200 square feet of impervious area, and that charge was estimated at about $6.15 per month, or roughly $70, $74 per year. And then there are some large residential properties that have impervious area that's much greater than 2,200 square feet, and those, those properties would fall under the tier three residential stormwater fee. That fee would be based on each individual property's amount of impervious area. And that's, for, for non-residential properties, for commercial properties, that's how we would, we would plan to assess those properties as well. So if they have 5,000 square feet of impervious area, they get charged based on 5,000. If they have 3,000, they would get charged based on 3,000.
Can I ask a quick question before you move on from there too? When you're referring to square footage, are you, is it a combination of structure and lot, or is it lot-specific? Are you talking impervious area?
It's all impervious area, yeah. So you look at the, you look at the, I say lot size, but what I meant by that was the amount of impervious area on every lot.
Okay, so it's, it's countering structure as well, as well as lot itself?
So the structure would be the roof, roof area.
Okay.
Yes.
And if there's any hard, hard surfaces like paving.
Paving.
Or driveway, that's counted as part of the impervious area.
As what? We couldn't hear that.
As, as well as driveways, anything that's, that would produce stormwater, that would runoff into the system, those hard surfaces, that's calculated as part of the impervious area.
Okay. Okay, you did number three for residential, you gave for the flat fee and for one and two, but how about number three? What is that per month?
That really, it depends on the, the property's impervious area, so it.
So you don't have a, a number?
Yeah, so, so, so if I can just.
Yeah, sure.
So it's, let's take a, a property that has 3,000 square feet of impervious area. So 3,000 square feet of impervious area divided by 1,000 square feet, so three times the $6.15 on a monthly basis.
And I'm sorry, you also did this, you went back and you collected the data, so you have all this data already exists on every, basically every property that exists within your coverage area.
And we also have a map that's available on our website that every property owner can go in and find their property either by address, or if they know their property ID number, the county property ID number, they can go in and actually look at their, their property and how it's calculated.
So give me an idea about the non-residential though. What, what would the charge be for that? I'm sure you have that number.
It's, again, it depends on every, each individual property and what their impervious area, so the same example that Charlotte gave would apply.
It's the same flat fee.
Flat fee, okay.
And the non-residential, I kind of jot down, ask you later, sorry, so if we're jumping right now.
I'm sorry.
So non-residential would mean ever, like any commercial-based, public, I mean, the whole, anything that's, I guess, all other, the others, but not residential essentially?
Correct. Anything that's not zoned as a residential unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're just.
So I mentioned, and Charlotte mentioned, equitability of a stormwater fee, and this is one, one way to, to view that. So wastewater rates are charged based on water consumption. So a customer that has lots of water usage, their bill is higher. And when you look at the residential customers in total, they comprise about 48% of all the water consumption. The rest is, the remaining 52% is, is non-residential usage. On this, so if you charge, if you charge the, that $5 million of, of stormwater-related costs from the wastewater, in wastewater rates, residential customers in total will pay approximately 48% of, of that cost. So if we're talking $5 million, or actually, this is based on $5.3 million on the left pie chart there, the residential share of that $5.3 million annual cost is about $2.5 If you then recover that same amount from the, from a stormwater fee, the residential share of the impervious area within the, within the city is 23%. So what that means is that, on average, residential customers are going to share in 23% of that, that $5.3 million. So residential customers would share in $1.2 million of the, of the cost if it was recovered from a stormwater, in a stormwater fee. And because, because the stormwater costs are driven by stormwater runoff, we believe impervious area is a more equitable way to, to, to charge for those, those related costs. So that's what, that's what we mean by equitable, more equitable on this. If you go to next. So Capital Region Water is not planning to do anything that's unique or novel by implementing a stormwater fee. Stormwater fees are used by hundreds, if not thousands, of municipalities nationwide, including municipalities across the Commonwealth and, and locally. So what you see on this chart here is that there are many communities here locally, shown in the dark blue, that have already implemented a stormwater fee. And so, as I said, it's not a, it's not a novel or new concept. And this is, this is a comparison, a bill comparison for a, the typical annual bill for a residential customer. If you, if the authority were to implement the, the stormwater fee as contemplated, that would be a $74 charge for, for most residential customers. And that would compare fairly well to other stormwater fees that are, that have already been implemented throughout, throughout Pennsylvania. And this is just a comparison of, of those other existing stormwater fees. So I did mention earlier on that there is a, we are planning to develop a credit program, and the credit program will allow a reduction in a customer's bill if they mitigate stormwater runoff. And if they mitigate stormwater runoff, what that means is that Capital Region Water will have to do fewer stormwater projects and pay for those through the stormwater fee. So the, the current plan is to offer up to 50% credit for commercial customers, and also give some opportunity for residential customers to receive stormwater credits if they were able to mitigate their stormwater runoff. So that is, that is one way in which customers can, can attempt to control their stormwater bill going forward. And we do limit the, the credit to 50% because there are programmatic costs of the stormwater program that will need to be continued and pursued. So the, the remaining 50% that, that's not available for a credit, that money will, or that fee would, would pay for those types of programs. And then lastly, we, lastly, we have an appeals process being developed. So if customers believe that their impervious area is inaccurate, or if they have multiple water accounts and they want to distribute their stormwater fee to those accounts in a different way than, than Capital Region Water has set up, there's a process for getting that addressed. So we are developing an appeals application that will be available, and there will be an appeals process that customers can go through to, to get any, any questions or issues resolved. But that's not, that appeals process is not intended to, to oppose, oppose a stormwater fee or, or explain why a customer shouldn't have to pay a stormwater fee, that's not the intent of the appeals process.
So what's, what's next? We, you know, we talked about what the, you know, the backbone of the City Beautiful H2O program plan is, it's the decentralized gray and green, and what does that look like? You know, we showed you some pretty pictures, but we also, I want to discuss projects that, you know, what's next are the projects that we've actually already begun to do, and, you know, hearken back to the process we went through during the community greening plan, and return back and continue that efforts of a community-based approach to these, these green initiatives throughout the city. And, you know, in, in the public realm as well, you know, continuing our, our partnership with, with the city on park revitalization. In 2018, we completed four revitalized parks with the city, which included wonderful green infrastructure components like the new basketball courts with forest pavement and rain gardens in, and also storage underneath those basketball courts that are managing runoff from the right-of-way. And this was partnered with new playground equipment and other park amenities, and helping to leverage funds and receive grant money. So we want to continue partnerships in looking at the whole park system and continue these efforts throughout the city. Also partnering with, you know, Green Street initiatives and implementing more projects like Third Street throughout the city, and also in thinking about that and managing runoff off right-of-way too, to help mitigate the road, the roadway runoff. And, and then we hope to develop a, a stronger partnership with the city, I mean, with the school district. And moving forward, as they develop capital improvement projects for facilities throughout the city, that will partner with them. And with all of these initiatives, with the, the city and with the school district, implementing these projects will help to alleviate the runoff they have, and therefore provide stormwater credits to that impervious, to that stormwater fee as well. We also want to continue initiatives with the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority. We transformed 12 vacant lots up in the Summit Terrace neighborhood and turned them into beautiful rain gardens at the corner of 13th and Bailey, and then a beautiful little community space that on the surface just looks like a wonderful green space of, that has two rain gardens, and then hidden under the surface is a, a storage for stormwater that helps mitigate runoff from the roadway and has improved localized flooding in that community. So we want to continue those efforts. And I'll pass it back off.
So just in, in closing, some of these things we've already talked about in terms of the City Beautiful H2O program and our negotiations with EPA, they continue. But as John mentioned, they have agreed that we meet the high burden level of, for the financial capability analysis, as well as how we spend this money moving forward. So those negotiations continue. We'll learn more on Thursday, what that high burden level means in terms of that schedule flexibility when our next meeting occurs with EPA. But those ongoing technical discussions will determine how that spending gets spread out over the next decade, two or three decades. But that system renewal that I talked about, that deferred maintenance that we're dealing with to prevent sinkholes from continuing in Harrisburg, that spending needs to continue. Regardless of how long EPA gives us to reduce combined sewer overflows, we still have to fix the system. So that work still continues as we continue negotiating with EPA. Then, in terms of our community outreach, as we've mentioned in the community greening effort that we conducted in 2017, we asked residents how, how we should pay for this program moving forward. And 86% of the respondents during that community outreach plan preferred a stormwater fee because they were, when we explained this whole plan, they realized that continuing to pay for this program based on wastewater rates and water consumption is not an equitable solution. So they agreed that a stormwater fee based on impervious area is more equitable for this program moving forward. And we have continued, we've, the board has extended the out, the public comment period until October 22nd, which is next week. So we have another week to go in our public comment period. We've conducted nearly 50 meetings, both in neighborhood meetings, as well as meeting with the largest impervious area owners. So we've met with 15 of the 16 largest impervious area owners, and additional 10 meetings with the next largest property owners from the 16 to 50 highest property owners. So those meetings continue, even now, they're continuing. We've had 85 public comments received to date, and we've had 45 media mentions regarding this program. So with that, we can open it up for additional questions.
Thank you, Charlotte, thank you for, that was very informative, and I certainly appreciate the presentation that you gave. City of Harrisburg certainly is in dire need of our antiquated sewer system, so we appreciate that you gave us an update on, on what Capital Region Water is proposing. that you gave us an update on what Capital Region Water is proposing. I will start the questions off by asking, now you mentioned that the figures for rate setting, how did you do that? Did you compare that to other cities or other states? How did you come up with the rate-setting figure? I mean, I know you're going by the property, impervious acreage of each property, but is that a particular setting for each state or each city throughout the?
That approach to establishing a fee based on impervious area is widespread. It is a common industry practice to do that. The costs associated with the stormwater fee, that was developed with, working with Capital Region Water, identifying those components of the costs that were identified as being directly related to managing the stormwater system and managing stormwater runoff. And so that's how that $5.3 million of cost was identified. Right now, those costs are in and projected in the wastewater financial plan. If the stormwater fee is developed, those get pulled out into the stormwater side. That's not to say that the wastewater rate is going to go down because you're pulling $5 million out of it. It potentially would go down if you didn't have, if Capital Region Water didn't have $130 million of other capital needs on the wastewater side that they plan to implement over the next five years. So that capital need outside of stormwater is driving, will drive the wastewater rate. But we were looking to separate stormwater costs from wastewater costs.
And can I just also add? I think where you might be going with that question is, how did we get to the unit cost?
Yes.
So we take that $5.3 million. We divide it by the amount of the impervious area covering the entire city, and we come up with a unit cost. That's the $6.15 per thousand square feet of impervious area. So we take that $5.3 million divided by the total impervious area, and we come up with that $6.15 per thousand square feet.
Now, will these same fees be assessed to the surrounding municipalities?
No, this is only for Harrisburg. Many of them have their own stormwater regulatory requirements to meet the Chesapeake Bay Reduction Plan.
Sure.
So they've implemented their own fees.
Okay, okay. All right. Let's see what else do I have. Are there any grants available through the federal state government to address some of this? And if it is, what have you found out as far as grant eligibility?
We actually just recently, we talked PennVest. So we've got an application in process right now through PennVest for $13 million specifically for green stormwater infrastructure. It's not the only thing that's out there. That's a pretty big one for us. We've had a pretty solid relationship with PennVest over the years. They've been very helpful for us. This is actually a brand-new program. I believe the GSI component is fairly new. So that's one, that's very much in front of us. In fact, we're hoping to hear fairly soon about action on our request.
So any of these grants that you do receive, will that reduce the cost to the Harrisburg taxpayers?
Yes.
Okay. All right, okay. I have a couple more, but I'll start to my left and just go to Mr. Mattson and come back.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm sorry.
That's not gonna reduce the stormwater fee.
Fee, right.
The fee is set.
No, I know the fee is set, but I'm saying.
It helps long-term reduce the.
That's what I meant. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. Mr. Mattson.
Yes, thank you for your testimony. It was very helpful and informative. So the EPA released a report discussing climate change in 2017 and its impact on infrastructures. In particular, they said in the northeast corridor, we could see more rapid rainfall, more heavy snowfall. Given it's likely then, based off the EPA's report, that we could see more inclement weather and more severe inclement weather, how will that affect the fee potentially? And do you have a strategy in place? Or could you talk about, have you read the report and maybe talk about how it could have an impact on the planning of the fee there?
So part of the negotiations with EPA is to develop this program moving forward in an adaptive approach. That adaptive approach means adjusting projects to capture more stormwater as climate change happens. So we have to look at each project in terms of how much stormwater is being captured. So that adaptive approach that we are negotiating with EPA in terms of allowing schedule flexibility as well as determining the projects as we move forward, will have to address that additional rainfall that we anticipate seeing in the future.
And in terms of our approach, you know, using green stormwater infrastructure in a decentralized manner, that we believe is the most resilient approach on top of, you know, the cost-effective storage throughout the system. You know, when, you know, other communities, you know, they can build these bigger underground structures, will those fill up if you're still not mitigating the amount of stormwater that is coming into your system? Those green strategies help to keep the stormwater out of the system altogether. And so using this sort of twofold approach, I think gets to your point of, you know, having the most resilient system.
And a kind of follow-up question is that maybe some of the concern I've heard is that it kind of could turn into a money pit type situation, right? That it's, we allocate a certain amount of public dollars to fix this, then all of a sudden it becomes more costly, and then we have to go back and we have to put more money into it, and then it just kind of goes from there. Can you talk about that concern and maybe how to address it?
So that concern goes to any approach that you take with a long-term control plan like this? Even if you build deep underground tunnels, cities that have undertaken those projects have seen those costs escalate rapidly just because of the unknown when you're dealing with building something underground like that. So whichever approach we take, it's a matter of managing cost, and we see that as an important role that we have to take in terms of managing costs regardless of which alternative we are implementing.
Yeah. One last final point is that, you know, moving forward, obviously the public's going to have a lot of inquiries if we have to make changes. So I just want to make sure, I know you guys do a great job of doing public outreach. I've attended a lot of the events. You're good at educating the community. Just making sure that as government entities, we communicate, we keep in touch, and we just keep the public as informed as possible, so we're on the same page as we have to adjust and maybe potentially change these plans moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to come back even on an annual basis and report to city council what we're doing on the plan.
Very good, thank you.
You go, Mr. Mattson?
Yep.
I'm Ms. Green.
Just a couple of questions. One, I kind of bounces off of Mr. Mattson's question. How are you looking to build in sustainability to ensure that the rates don't continue to rise and become too expensive for our residents?
Just to get a quick stat. I guess one point to make is that we've already laid out the limits of what the regulators say is, you know, affordable. And so we have some parameters around that that give us an opportunity to manage the program to keep under what that affordability limit is. Beyond that, Capital Region Water is looking to, looking at all of its rates. So water, wastewater, and to be stormwater, to structure those rates in a way that it is as friendly to low-income customers as possible. Capital Region Water is also moving forward with a customer assistance program and looking at various elements of that to address the affordability issue as well. And so you all can talk a little bit more about that.
That's a great segue. So you've heard it from us, we've heard it from you, that, hey, how can we as municipal authority provide way for, you know, our demographic and our rate payers to get some relief? It's been kind of interesting trying to find under our construct as a municipal authority how we can legally do that. We've now got a path, and we're actually making that conversation. We've advanced it to hopefully cooking that into our budget for 2020. So we're looking to find ways to implement. There's actually, we've been talking with the legislature, it's kind of hung up. There's a House bill that's kind of stuck in committee that also is providing some potential for municipal authorities such as us to maybe get funding outside of our, you know, our own revenue to support that. But we are absolutely on the same page and well aware, and like, we're looking to be able to roll that program out in the coming year.
Also, another question, you were talking about the credit system. How will you measure the stormwater mitigation to give people their percentage off?
Yeah, so those would be engineered solutions. So you'd have to work through different strategies. So if a customer is implementing a rain garden or porous pavement or those other strategies, they would have to submit the information, engineered information to show how much they're capturing, and then that would, that's how it would be calculated. And we didn't have the full chart up there, but there's a sliding scale. So depending on how much you're managing, it can, you know, you can stack percentages of credit up to that 50%.
Okay. So wouldn't be something as simple as like buying one of those barrels to catch the stormwater to water your garden? It's something like more in-depth?
It is, yeah. Correct, right.
Okay. So we're looking at them having to invest money on engineer reports in order to get the discount?
Not necessarily. On a larger scale, if it's a commercial or industrial property that is implementing something, then we would want to see engineering reports. Because typically they are much more involved than just a rain spout, downspout disconnect going into a planter, for instance. So that can be managed locally with us rather than having an engineer to calculate how much is being managed.
And then there are some other components too, relate around education. For example, we have a schools credit that will probably expand, have that expanded to include if there's any sort of educational programs like the Salvation Army or Boys and Girls Club that are, you know, fit into education around water and stormwater. There's an educational credit as well that, I'm forgetting the percentage. Yeah, but that, there's, yeah, it's not just VMPs, but if you have education as well, that fits in.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
You're welcome. Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much for your presentation. This is my second time hearing it. I did attend one of the community meetings, but I learned something new today, too. My question was, I wanted to know a little bit more about the credit program, so thank you for sharing that. And I wanted to circle back to the other public and community meetings. I know you mentioned that you held 25. How was attendance, and what was the overall feeling amongst residents?
So unfortunately, stormwater is not a sexy issue. And trying to get the public out to hear about stormwater and a program like this is difficult. So we would have wished that the public meetings were more, had higher attendance. I think that's one of the reasons that the board decided to extend the public comment period, so we could try and get more information out. We're hoping that with this being televised, that we'll reach more of the residential population that we haven't been able to engage during this process. So we have received, as I said, about 85 comments. So while that's not, that's not good, we know that there were a lot of other people who attended these neighborhood meetings who weren't comfortable with making comments and having their comments put into writing. So, yeah, we're hoping that this forum will get more word out that we were not able to get.
Okay, excellent. Well, I'm a big proponent of just education and really informing. So I'm hoping that more people will be able to see this as televised and learn something new from it. I would also support the annual reporting. You mentioned that that was something you guys would be open to. I would love for them to come on an annual basis and just provide a quick update, maybe during communications, as to what's going on, so everyone is aware.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Ms. Charlie.
Thank you. First, thank you all for being here. One of the things that I was thinking about is, as you guys were getting underway in 2013, I took office in 2014, so I feel like I've been along for this journey in terms of what you all have been looking to accomplish over the years. Several things stand out that I want to kind of applaud you for. One, I think you have done a remarkable job of being a community partner. And I think that's something that really goes without saying, that's so necessary as we've collectively, between what you all have been doing, what we've been doing, what so many in the community have been trying to do is to reverse years and years and years of decline, based on unfortunately prior leaders passing the buck and not wanting to address the issue. Over the course of the last six years, I feel like I have had to make very difficult decisions that have a cost impact on the residents because we knew that we had to do it in order to get to a better place. But one of the things I think that is really important to note, particularly for our community to understand, is that you are an organization made up of members of our community. And I think that's a very important piece to be able to, for people to remember and to have, guide their understanding of how we're working towards a solution. There is no easy way to address the situation. And honestly, I wish more people in our community could go through and understand this process. And I agree with you, I'm budget-friendly, Sarah. What I do is not sexy on this county council either, but I understand the importance of what, the impact of that. Several questions that I have, obviously, there's so many tricky issues that come with that. Some people have kind of mentioned sustainability, and, you know, I realize that sustainability, unfortunately, has become a partisan term, which for the life of me, I do not understand. But for whatever reason, it has. And I realize that I can be sitting here on council and being like, yes, yes, I get it, I'm with you, let's do something about it. But there's a big behemoth three blocks away that there's a number of people there who don't seem to get it or want to get it. What are some of the efforts that you have to be able to make an impact up on Capitol Hill, to get the point across about some of these issues around sustainability and the impact of climate change, of which I keep reminding people in the legislature that we're already seeing the impact in Harrisburg and have for quite some time?
So Charlotte had mentioned earlier in the presentation that we took the show on the road to very specifically first the top 15 potential, you know, rate, the highest 15 rate payers based on their impervious coverage, and that was predominantly.
The state.
Absolutely. So that included a conversation with Department of Agriculture relative to the Farm Show. And we're still, we're having quite a bit of conversation with DGS about the, you know, the state government property, school district. So that was a big component of us getting out, being transparent, here's what it is, here's how we've calculated your fee, please confirm. Here's, you know, not quite the extent of this presentation, but certainly hit hard on the sustainability, the history that we're dealing with. We've got a lot to make up for over the past history. So the feedback has been predominantly, like, nobody's excited about paying the fee. I mean, I get that. But it's been an understanding, it's been a, hey, we've been aware of this either in other entities across the state or other school districts that have experienced this. It's not a new program. So across the board, folks were pretty much like, look, yeah, we're not thrilled, but we understand, we see why you have to do it. And really, there's been a little pushback. Now, of course, you know, first bill hasn't hit somebody's mailbin yet, so we may have some discussion then. But up to this point, it's been generally, it's been very understanding of the approach.
Well, and I also think too, I mean, that's good to hear on one level, but then I'm thinking about the impact because of coming up with legislation that will help address some of these things and provide like some relief to communities like ours that are facing a very burdensome approach to this. You know, what a lot of people don't understand too is that, you know, being where we are geographically, being in the northeast, being an aging city, and a very historic one at that, you know, we don't have the same issues that probably 32 states in our country have to address when it comes to dealing with these issues. But we have to address it. And we have to address it as a community that is relatively poor and relatively, you know, ill-equipped financially to be able to address it. So I think the impact on the state, the state has to step in and be able to provide some relief in some ways for communities like ours to get beyond it. The second part that I wanted to go to the question is, in your modeling, in your research, and in the work that you've done, what type of models have you studied that would be based on communities like ours or similar to ours that provide at least perhaps some guidance or advice, or perhaps they're doing something that we can glean from now to move in that direction?
So that, all of those different alternative strategies that I talked about and that we used our hydraulic model to determine if they would be effective in our system, all of those are based on case studies from other municipalities. They're based on, you know, what is required by EPA in looking at alternatives. But also, the cost that I talked about is based on what other communities have seen to determine how cost-effective it would be here. So many other communities that have chosen some of those higher costs that I talked about, whether it's deep underground tunnels or parallel conveyance systems, those, many of those communities that have already signed a consent decree are asking EPA to open their consent decree again. consent decree again to allow them to implement green infrastructure like we're recommending.
And is that because of the cost impact that they're looking?
Because of the cost. They see that it's more affordable and it provides so many other benefits to the community. It helps with the climate change aspect. A greener city that has more trees and more landscape can manage that stormwater much more effectively than these other control strategies. So many of those communities have been, have asked EPA to open that consent decree and revisit how they're approaching the strategy more similar to what we are implementing.
I'm sorry, I have tons of questions. You guys were so surprised, I know. With respect to the equitable distribution, I actually applaud that effort to go through it. I think too often we've addressed problems that we've been facing. It hasn't been that way and the burden has been borne too much by our residents and not enough by other people who, other people and/or organizations that impact that cost. So I really, I do think that that's something that's important to, can you go down, which I realize doesn't make it popular probably from the commercial, non-residential side of it, but I think the impact is true. And if you have the data, I think that helps to show that an equitable distribution would be really important to that. So I applaud that as an approach to take. Two remaining questions, and having given lots of positive, the cost containment has got to be first and foremost in terms of what we look at, particularly the impact of our community. And I want to make sure that everything that we do, everything that you all do, is pointed in that direction to protect the least of us in our communities. So with that in mind, when I was looking at the average cost, the 74 that was on, let's see, back to that page here, it was on our page 15, so it's your slide deck 30, I think. So that was the stormwater fees across PA. So that $74, is that the average then increase that someone's going to see in their bill? If, of all things being equal, is that 74 on top of what they're already paying right now?
So, yes.
Yeah. So on average, so every resident on average, that would be kind of that impact of what that cost would be?
Yes.
They're going to see increases in their wastewater.
Yeah.
Two.
The wastewater rate will continue to increase because as, as we've mentioned, that $315 million of capital spending still has to be borne mostly on the wastewater side. But this offsets some of that cost, but not the, not the majority of that $315 million.
So when you do, and maybe this is something perhaps you can come back to us with just kind of the data on, but what would be, if we were looking at the average cost of someone's then bill from CRW, all these things being equal, projected out, you know, 2020 and beyond, if we could get some of that data just to be able to understand what that impact would be?
We have modeled that.
Yeah, we're not complete with that modeling because we're into the budget season for what does next year look like from a wastewater perspective, from a water perspective. And so, you know, we will have that information in the next, probably in the next month we'll have it.
Yep. As soon as you have it, if you can share that with us, that would be really helpful.
Just one caveat on the $74. Small, small lots or small properties with relatively low impervious area will see a $37 annual, annual cost for the stormwater fee, not 74.
74 was the baseline based on the-
74 was the most residential, but if-
The flat fee.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
Were you talking about $6.15?
Right, per?
Per.
Square foot impervious surface, that kind of? Final two questions, final question, actually. The stormwater control measures and the things that people could do, one of the concerns I have often when we talk about things that people can do is that, that's kind of that pie in the sky, like, hey, everybody who has all the time in the world can devote this to that. I want to be the realist among us and say, how can we make sure that the best chance, the best education, the best access to be able to take on some of these initiatives themselves? And I'd be really interested, and not that you have to answer this right now, but as we go down this path, that your efforts, your marketing, your outreach and things like that are most directed at giving every chance to our residents to be able to look at ways that they can implement things and do it so without a cost impact, like, you know, people don't want to spend thousands of dollars just to reduce their bill by X. They want to be able to do something that has a little cost impact to them, but can save them in the long run.
I see that, that public outreach being very important because as John mentioned, the more that we can incentivize the larger property owners to manage stormwater, the less more costly public projects we have to do to manage stormwater. So I see that as really in our best interest as a community is to incentivize those larger property owners to do something.
And if we can help with that from the outreach that we have from our standpoint where we sit, I think that's really important. The only closing thing that I want to say is, you know, this shouldn't be a political issue for us to resolve and come to approach for us to be able to get through. So I don't want to make it one. I would just hope that as collective bodies that we can work together, engage the community in understanding what's happening and kind of travel down this road together as a municipal partnership should be. And I think, and I'll give you my commitment from where I sit, that that's something I'm very willing to do to make sure that we can get to the right place on all this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Strahler. Mr. Majors.
Thank you. A few questions. So I'm going back to, I guess this is slide 28 about the fee distribution. We're talking about stormwater, but the fee distribution has a distribution based on wastewater flow and impervious surface. So I know our wastewater system, we look, we support other communities wastewater comes through our treatment facility. And when we're looking at the residential and non-residential split, is that all City of Harrisburg or is that also those other communities that utilize our wastewater treatment facility?
Yeah, so that, that chart is looking at City Harrisburg customers, retail customers. There are, there are in fact, I call them wholesale customers, but customers outside of Harrisburg that pay for Caparison water to convey and treat their wastewater. So that, that piece is not, is not reflected in the chart. It's certainly reflected in the, the financial analysis that we do on the wastewater side.
Okay. So in terms of the cost that we're looking to increase, what percentage are any of those wholesale customers bearing? I mean, or as we're looking to do the increase on the wastewater side, those costs are being attributed to them on the wastewater?
They are. I can get that, yeah. So the outside city customers, the wholesale customers will, will pay for their share of wastewater-related costs. Any costs that are focused on city green infrastructure is being born, or at least being planned to be born by city customers. But all of that other, the other component of that $315 million capital program, if it's rehab and replacement and upgrade of existing infrastructure that the outside customers utilize, then they will share in those costs. And their, their share of, of flow in total is somewhere in the 45% range. So they're a significant contributor to wastewater flow.
Okay. And I wanted to make sure that we're including those because we do have a combined system. So any of the wastewater that is, that being collected, being distributed into our system on top of any additional stormwater we get, it's all eventually going through the same infrastructure. So we need to make sure that that's-
Those capital costs will also be borne by those wholesale customers.
Okay. Additionally, so we're talking about the partial consent decree. And one of the questions that at least comes up for me, especially since it's still being negotiated, is the timing of, you know, the stormwater fee. It's something I think the mayor has spoken to in the past is, you know, are we putting, are we looking to start collecting a fee, understanding that we have infrastructure improvements that need to continue to be done? But when will we know from EPA? I mean, you mentioned that they've agreed that we've met the high burden of financial capability assessment. Is that in writing or is that just a conversation that's been being had? Because we all know at some point they can, you know, make a different determination and then increase our potential cost.
So that, so we will find out more on Thursday when we meet with them, but that, that discussion, that has been, that is from the attorney that is representing the EPA. So they have agreed that, that we meet that high burden. So is, I'm not sure if we have it in email, but that, that has occurred over several phone conversations with them.
And I think part of, I guess, one person, and I think, I know the mayor had spoken some of these things, too, is, you know, just in terms of, I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm saying that if we're going to move forward something, we need some more definitive information so that we know that the path that we're going down is the correct one because if they end up looking to, you know, change course or say, you know, hey, Harrisburg, you might be able to afford more than $315 million worth of capital spending because we know that gets us part of the way there. But, you know, years of deferred maintenance and continual upgrades is going to cost us probably, our costs are well, going to well exceed that $315 million worth is actually going to be needed to get us to a, so this is what we can afford and it's a partial decree. I mean, it's not going to get us, you know, potentially out the clear. So I said, I just want, for me, having a little bit more concrete information from EPA would, you know, help, as I'm sure would probably help you feel a little lot more comfortable about where we're going because though we talk about, you know, the residential split and the City Harrisburg split or the school district split, all those dollars are coming from the same people. So, I mean, you splitting them out is great so people can see, but, you know, that's still a large cost that's going to be borne by City Harrisburg residents.
I think the challenge with the timing, and we have labored over this conversation as well, is I suspect, and somebody at the table, correct me if I'm wrong, that the documentation from EPA is not going to be documentation until we get to consent decree. So all until that point, and that takes time to get through all the other components, there's been up to this point, an extensive amount of kind of iteration and conversation where we've really funneled down to a point that we collectively as a board and leadership and consultants felt, look, we're pretty much dialed in here, the, you know, fairly recent confirmation from the highest levels of EPA Region 3, having said, hey, look, the 315 looks like the right number. There are, there are details most certainly to be worked out. They're going to take some time. The challenge for us is these improvements needed to be done years ago, like we are already behind. So we had to pick the point. Where do we start? And we're certainly respectful of, look, we don't, we don't want to put this burden on our payers any sooner than we need to as well. Our concern is the longer we wait to do it, there will be cost implications, there will be other implications beyond just cost that, that make it a challenge. So it is, it's kind of nuanced, see, there's a lot of art and not science involved here, too, that we're trying to find the right spot to say, look, we have to strike the line to get this, to get the fee going so we can be able to actually implement the improvements. But it's a point very well taken that we, trust me, we have had significant conversation about when is the right time.
Okay. And then again, this is just a clarification for me because I've been to a couple of the public meetings and the conversation, I know a couple of my other council members mentioned about the credit program, but it still seems, at least maybe my understanding is flawed, but it's not necessarily a, the fee's not going to change, it's the amount, so, all right, let me take a step back. $6.15 per unit, per thousand feet. If I'm a residential customer, how much of that could I potentially, that per month fee could be knocked off if I participate fully in all the credits? Or is it, it does not change how much, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So, so the credit is based on how much stormwater an individual property owner manages. So it's totally dependent on what they implement. If they were to disconnect all of their downspouts and manage it on their property by rain gardens or some other approved best management practice that's in a DEP manual, the Department of Environmental Protection, has a stormwater manual that says what types of measures are allowed under the state program. So only those measures can be used. If they manage their stormwater, it is, it is based, the credit is based on how much of their impervious area or how much stormwater they manage. So we can't just say blanket, it's, you know, the same because it all depends on how much stormwater they manage. So they can, they can reduce that up to 50%
Okay.
if they manage all of their stormwater on their property.
Your presentation called it a commercial credit. Are you saying that it's up to 50% for residential as well?
If they have a large enough property to be able to build something that manages stormwater, they are eligible for the credit as well.
Okay. But, okay. And what, and what increments are we counting the measurement of that stormwater? So, you know, is it per, I don't know, how many gallons or like?
So, yeah, so there's, it's, it's more about the level of storm that a property is managing. So the, you know, the base, you know, what's required in land development currently is around like a two-year storm, which is around like that two inches of stormwater across that property. If you begin to go above that, that two-year, you're managing the 10-year, you're managing 25-year, then that builds on, on the credit. Or, and there's both, you know, you're managing it for water quality, so you have water quality components like vegetation and other filter systems that are, you know, reducing, pulling out the pollutants out of that water. Or you're, you can also get credit based on how much volume you hold. So if you have enough space on your property and you're, you know, managing, you're holding back a lot of that volume, then there's a, the credit range based on that. So there's a whole set of ranges of, of percentage of credit that you can get to stack up to that 50%. And it's all-
And the policies and procedures manual will get into all of those details.
Okay.
We can't possibly go into all of those options.
Because that's, I mean, your explanation's given me more questions than answers in terms of how does some one person manage and then over a period of time? So, I mean, the way you're saying it, it doesn't sound like-
And I should say, you know, there are, we will work with, you know, the whole community, whether it's residential or commercial, on helping, you know, with technical assistance to work through these issues. There's going to be a big focus, though, on the properties that have the most stormwater runoff. I mean, to previous statements made, but about targeting those people who have the most impact. So, you know, really helping and, and working with and partnering with those, those property owners that have a lot of impervious surface and managing, you know, starting there versus the smaller properties that, it's limited in what efforts they can take to manage their stormwater.
Okay.
So maybe look at this differently. So maybe more, what you're looking for is can we provide some kind of a simple FAQ or a sheet or a list that says for a typical residential ratepayer, here's what, they're going to be way different than a commercial property. Commercial property is likely going to be of a size that's going to require engineering and technical and a need of-
Exactly. And I understand that, and that's why I'm, for me personally, right now, I'm not talking about the commercial side. There's going to be engineering reports and, you know, litigation potentially back and forth, trying to figure out agreements on what, if I'm eligible for a discount, what that looks like. What does, I'm focusing on our residents right now. So what does that look like for them as one of my former, one of my council members said, you know, hey, well, I know right now a rain garden won't get me there, but what will?
So I think it's right, it's presenting it in a much more-
Or a rain barrel, excuse me.
-a simpler fashion that a typical residential ratepayer can go, oh, I get it. I know what a rain barrel is, or I know what a fill-in-the-blank is, and if I do that, it's going to reduce my fee by X. So I think it's incumbent on us to be able to say, all right, we can, whether it's a one-pager, or it goes back to the public outreach comment earlier, public outreach doesn't stop when we implement the fee. I can certainly picture us, you know, hey, once the fee's implemented, there's going to be questions. Does that mean, hey, let's have some more town halls or we're going to have specific, hey, we'll be in this neighborhood, come to this meeting tonight, we're going to talk more about if you're interested in trying to reduce your fee, your fee, here's some ways we can do it. So I think that I hear this loud and clear that, look, the larger commercial folks are going to have, it's a different understanding, it's a different level, right?
Right, that's a different level.
But on the, on the typical, which is the bulk of the, you know, whatever it was, kind of the middle tier of residence ratepayers is being able to convey that very simply and concisely and say, look, here's the stuff, here's an example, here's where you can find it, here's how you do it. Because we get it, you know, typical ratepayers are not going to be able to go out and hire an engineering firm to pay for that stuff. We don't want them to. It's us being able to say, I'm trying to boil this down to whether we can do it in one-page or not, but I think ultimately that's our goal is how do we make it as easy as possible for ratepayers? Admittedly, it's going to be a little tricky for residential ratepayers because, I mean, to get to the 50%, you're going to have to do a fair amount of work.
Well, and- Well, and, well, I guess, and it would be, and it's 50% of, I'm sorry for belaboring the point, it's 50% of the water that, the stormwater runoff that comes off of their property. We're trying to figure out what that number is, how do we figure that? I mean, it's, because our, yeah.
It's a pretty simple calculation. But there are, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. There are lots of communities that have implemented stormwater fees, that have residential guidelines or guidance to help a resident go through that process of understanding, how much stormwater do they have to manage for that credit? So they're off the shelf, you can find them on the web. We're going to have those types of guidance for residential customers as well as the commercial customers to help a resident understand how they can manage stormwater. So that's part of our education that we have to do.
All right, well, I'll pause for now, and I know my colleague may have some questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors, Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and my colleagues have asked a lot of questions already. But I'm more focused on like the billing aspect of this process. So right now, if I'm a resident and I'm not paying my water bill, there is a cost for shut-off, and there's a cost for starting it back up, et cetera. Does a stormwater fee, is that included in that? Is there a way, will those things be separated out so that there are different legal consequences for paying one versus the other? Or, you know, if someone has to choose between, you know, having to decide to pay the water bill versus the stormwater, and they know, well, I'll pay the water because that has these extra fees and put off the stormwater because it doesn't, like, what are the implications for the different fees?
Yep, so the stormwater fee is going to be added to the water and sewer bill. So it will be a separate line, though you'll see the water consumption on one line, you'll see the sewer or wastewater rate on another line, and then you'll see the stormwater fee. But all that gets rolled into the lump sum of what the total bill is. So that shut-off is based on, you know, paying that full bill. We don't separate out, you know, what portion of the bill they're paying. If they're not paying the total bill over, you know, based on our policies, at some point in time, by not paying that full bill, they will be shut off for their water.
And right now, what are the different fees for, because you guys, right now, you do like a $25 just to post the notice, right? There's, like, so like if the water, you get, that in and of itself is just an additional 25, just for posting the notice. And then what's the fee, like, to get it back on?
$188.
I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head.
$188, it used to be 100, it's 188 now, I'm sure. That's what I've been told.
Yeah, we'll get that breakdown and send it to city council.
Okay, that's fine.
I just don't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, that is important, because for you guys, you're looking at, you know, water as water, which is, it's your job, but on our end, water is also someone's access to housing, right? So when you create these, when there are these additional barriers for someone just trying to figure out making ends meet, it's not just that they're losing an ability to shower and cook their food, they're also maybe losing their house, because we can down properties for not having water going into them. So I would like to see you give some thought to how you're handling that. Because, you know, in some of our neighborhoods, you know, for some, a lot of a $6 isn't much, but for some people it is, and, you know, especially the more precariously, the more, people in more precarious financial situations, you know, they're already struggling just to make their rent, right?
And that's why we're looking at the customer assistance program, because we recognize that a lot of customers are having a hard time paying, and so we have to factor that into this whole equation.
Yeah, and I really appreciate it, because, you know, I don't know, it's an embarrassment to me that we live in the US and people don't have access to potable water. Like, you know, it's 2019 in the US, and someone can own a gold toilet, and someone could not have access to potable water. So, yeah, so thank you for looking into that, and if you can think about ways to handle the billing, that's the least, that has the least impact on someone's access to habitable housing. I hear that's appreciated.
Ms. Daniels? That's it?
Yeah, you all asked all of the other questions.
Well, thank you for addressing that, Ms. Daniels, because that's one of the questions that I was going to ask, is about the $25 posting fee, why is that implemented? What is the purpose of $25 postings on the door? Why is there a fee associated with that?
Because that costs us money in terms of sending out a person in order to post that notice.
Isn't that same individual, the employee who does that job, is collectively included in their duties?
Correct, but we have a business to run, so that cost should be borne by the person, by the customer who is causing that service to be required. So the other customers who are paying their bills on time should not have to bear the burden of somebody that's going out to a property just to post a notice that they're not paying their bill. So it's a matter, it's a fee for service, and every customer should be paying.
Have you given a notice to the residents of city Harrisburg that there's assessed a $25 fee to have a posting on your door?
We did have a, how many, how long was the public comment period on the policies? It was 60, it was a 60-day public comment period? And we did put information into the.
Inside their billings?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, I just have two requests, is one is from Ms. Bowers, that you come and give us a new report on a basis. And also that Mr. Allitt requested some information regarding the bill inclusive on the stormwater and wastewater fee. And the other request I have is that we work together, you know, collectively, to make sure that we try to work with the residents of city of Harrisburg so that they won't be affected besides the increase of the stormwater fee with the wastewater fee as well, and with their usual water bill. Because right now, we have a percentage of individuals who cannot pay their water bills. And so I thank you for, you know, we've talked quite often about implementing some type of program to help them, you know, the residents who could not maintain that bill. So I'm glad to see that you're going to move forward that. Just keep me updated on that, please, would you? Okay, all right, I thank you again.
Madam President, may I?
Just a minute, thank you again for finding a solution, thank you for coming tonight for the presentation, and I think it was very informative. Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
I just wondered if I could ask a couple of questions quickly, I know it's been a long.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
So just a couple of comments and observations. I do think that there are two general, big-picture problems here, which we should at least talk about slightly. One of which is that we just don't have a plan before us on how this $315 million is going to be spent. Public hasn't had a chance to vet the plan any more than they've had a chance to vet the, you know, the credit program, which hasn't been developed yet. And I think by talking about the fee outside of an examination of how the money's going to be spent, we really can't have any certainty or any clarity that the plan is going to work. There was a lot of sort of vague discussion about green infrastructure, but as far as I know, on the green infrastructure projects that we've done up to this point, I don't believe there's been a real cost-benefit analysis, or if, I don't know if anyone up here can tell me if the cost-benefit analysis was done on the green infrastructure on Third Street so that we know exactly how much it costs to divert, you know, however many thousands of gallons of water. I will also note that the first time that we're going to be shown the plan by Capital Region Water is not until November 4th, despite our asking for months, and that's after the comment period is closing. So I would just request, first and foremost, that Capital Region Water not close comments on the 22nd, and certainly not until at least the city has had a chance to review the overall plan for how the money's going to be spent. So that's comment one, and I think it's an issue that we didn't even scratch the surface on tonight. Issue number two is, it seems pretty clear that we're not solving our environmental problem, and we're not cleaning up the Chesapeake Bay, we're making improvements, but we're not cleaning up the Chesapeake Bay. And we're spending $315 million on a plan, basically because that's what Raffatellus tells us we can afford, but it doesn't solve the problem. And in fact, every solution that solves the problem by your own graph and chart is going to cost significantly more. And if we want to get to 95%, you know, compliance or whatever the EPA very rightly, I think, could request of us, we don't have a plan that works for that. By your own admission. So this is deeply troubling, because it doesn't solve the environmental problem, and it seems to open the door for potential future costs, which are not really being represented as necessary or possible at this stage. And then my third point, I think, is, this is just a general point, and this came to me as we were having the conversation today, because I didn't really realize it, but... So a homeowner that has up to 2,200 square feet of impervial surface is going to pay the $74 a year. So if I have, if I'm a homeowner and I have 2,210 square feet, you know, just slightly more, then I'm going to be subject to the multiplier times the $6.15 per month, right? So I think that means that somebody who has, you know, 2,200 square feet of impervial surface, if their next-door neighbor has 2,210, the next-door neighbor's going to pay $163 a year as opposed to the person who's paying $74 a year, which seems very unfair on the face of it, but it also shows you the degree to which the numbers are essentially subsidizing what they're calling the sort of non-residential ratepayer, or in the case that I just had there, a larger residential. So considering that the majority of Harrisburg homeowners don't own, I mean, residents don't own homes, and are renters, aren't we just shifting the burden on the renter through this plan? Because it is shifting, because they're all captured in the non-residential commercial component. They're all paying, just like that neighbor who's paying more than twice what his neighbor's paying, they're all paying the $6.15 multiplier, which really means that we are subsidizing homeowners on the backs of renters. And in this case, it seems like renters are really those in Harrisburg who can least afford it, and ironically, are also the ones in Harrisburg who have the least ability to change it, because they can't put in green infrastructure on their, you know, multi-property units or anything like that. So I would just be curious as to how you don't see that as a shifting of the burden on the poorest tenants in the city by basically having this sort of bifurcated system which classes the majority of tenant property as non-residential. And I guess, I guess that's sort of, those would be the big comments for now.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Any of those comments?
Yes, Mayor, you can address those, I'm sorry, I was.
No, absolutely.
Questioned by Ms. Droule.
So there were a few, and maybe, and I'll apologize if we jump around between.
Well, the first one, what you said, the plan, you don't have a plan before a city council.
Well, I haven't seen it.
That we haven't seen today.
So if I understand the question or the statement is that there is a request to specifically see a listing of projects that comprise the money that's going to be spent coming out of the stormwater impact fee?
And whether those projects will actually result in a reduction in.
So two different questions.
No, it's the same question, a plan that works, basically. Not just a listing of projects, but whether or not those projects.
Excuse me, Mr. Majors, Mayor, let Mr. Karowski answer, and then, Mayor, if you have any response, then go ahead, because you can't both talk at the same time.
So the listing of projects is part of the, what we're required to provide for EPA, we're happy to provide a list of projects. I think what's interesting to me, this is not unlike what we do on the wastewater side or the water side every single year as part of our capital improvements plan, and have never, ever been requested to provide any specific list of those projects. We are happy to do it, but it's being portrayed as it's being hidden, or it's not being shown, or somebody's not showing us, or it's not developed, that is unequivocally not the case. We treat this, we can provide a listing of projects that says, here, here is specifically what they look, what they are, what they are, what they cost. To the part about how will they work, and I think, again, if you're asking about a cost, this is a question, you're asking about like a kind of a cost-benefit ratio to say, well, if we spend X dollars, that gets us this much return? Or is it just a general question about the methodology and the idea of using green stormwater infrastructure versus some other method of trying to achieve these goals?
The goal is to satisfy the consent decree by capturing the excess runoff into the Susquehanna River. So the question is, how much capture are we going to get from the list of projects? And it's not just a list of projects, it's an actual engineered study, which will give us confidence that, I don't think it will give us confidence that it will solve the problem, because you're not even trying to solve the problem, but at least that it will get us up to 80%, which I'll note has increased over the past couple of months.
We're trying to solve the problem within the financial constraints that not only does EPA mandate, but that we know are what's happening here. The $315 million is not where this started. We have been working for a year and a half, two years, probably, in conversation with EPA about what's the appropriate spend. If we had a 1.2 billion, awesome, we'd go spend and we'd be at 100% in some short timeframe. We don't, that's a fact. We're trying, it sounds like, I'm struggling with, it feels like we're on both sides of the fence here. Hey, we don't want you to do this, we think it's unfair, but at the same time, you're not spending nearly enough money. So we're working within constraints of EPA. They set the rules, which is in partnership with DOJ ultimately, I mean, Department of Justice, on how this consent decree is implemented. So we've had to find the balance that what can our ratepayers afford so we are not overly burdening them? How can we achieve that level of reduction? The conversation with EPA right now is, hey, there's a timeframe where that, where are we, 80% capture? Or is it 60?
Currently.
The 20-year plan?
It will be like 80.
It was 60, it sort of magically went to 80.
Not magically, it's part of the process.
It's part of the model.
Which we haven't seen.
So you actually are asking to see, which I think is the intent on November, whatever it is, to sit down and see the technical data that our consultants have compiled in the modeling and the financial data, and the hydraulic modeling, and the GIS system, and all the things that we've been doing for the last five years.
And I think the public should see it too, and we'll be happy to translate it.
Is it available on your website?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I just say that $315 million over 20 years of spend isn't the end game? The modeling and the financial planning that we've done does get to full compliance.
I'm sorry, Charlotte, would you please talk into the mic, because it won't be recorded.
The $315 million over the next 20 years is not the end game. That is based on the level of affordability that EPA mandates, which we talked about. The model and the plan does get to full compliance, but that is a $600 million spend, and it takes 65 years based on affordability to get to that compliance level. So the model does show full compliance, and this has been in the discussions with EPA, it's part of the negotiations. So that $315 million is only based on how much we, our ratepayers can afford in that 20-year timeline. So we do show full compliance, it just takes a long time, because our ratepayers cannot afford it.
Okay.
I'm just going to add, on the plan itself, the City Beautiful H2O Plan is a over 600-page document that was, it was provided to everyone within the city on the website. You had a number of public outreach meetings around that. That provides all of the details associated with the plan. And certainly, we should make sure that everybody has a copy of that so that you can look at all the details, but that is the plan.
And it has been on our website for two and a half years, at least, since the plan was submitted to EPA.
Okay, thank you very much from Capital Region Water. I will now move to.
Hold on, hold on, I think there was a couple of other questions.
Well, this is what, because I want to open up to the public, Mr. Majors, it is 7:20, it's two hours, they've been sitting and waiting, and they would like to ask some questions while the Capital Region Water team is here. So I want to give them, the public, an opportunity to ask the necessary questions that they need. They've been sitting patiently for two hours, and I thank you. I'm going to start with my right, please come to the mic. I asked the mayor, please, to meet with Ms. Katzenmore and her, Mr. Karowski and your team to answer any, to ask any additional questions that you may have, please.
Sure.
Start to my right, please, thank you, Mr. Majors.
Okay.
Anyone to my right that would like to come to the mic at this point? Okay, anyone to my left that would like to come to the mic? Okay, anyone to my left that would like to come to the mic? Please do so now. I know, take your time.
My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the 1800 block of State Street. I have a question. This may be a moot point because it probably will not happen, but there were some interviews held about the possible someone else taking over Capital Regional Water. My question is, those people that were interviewed, where they asked the same questions that Capital Regional Water is being asked, because EPA is not going away. They want this done. What are these people's plans? What is it going to cost us from them? We've gotten given away parking. When these people came to parking, they raised parking up to fees that people weren't willing to pay. The same questions that Capital Regional Water is being asked, where they asked of those other two people that were interviewed, and what were their answers? Thank you.
And Ms. Hunt, let me say this to you, that we have not been given any information regarding those interviews, so you may want to direct that question to the mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can you answer that question for her?
Yeah, it would be a little premature to ask those questions because we're not in a bid scenario yet where they can come in and do the due diligence to actually be able to say, they can capture 95% and they can cost it out at, you know, 300 million or 250 million, and this would be a savings because of that. That would require a lot more time analysis. What we did do is we talked to them about their experience in other third-class cities in Pennsylvania and other systems that had combined overflows, how they approached the cost, how they approached their plan, to get a sense of their general sense, level of expertise and desire. And in a general sense, I will say that many of them expressed concern that it seemed like we were trying to do this on the cheap, and that in their experience in other municipalities, 95% capture is what they would look to achieve, and that they'd done that elsewhere at costs that are not approaching what we saw on that graph. So I don't know how to square that circle without asking them to do more due diligence and do more research, but it seems like elsewhere in Pennsylvania, we've been able to achieve a higher percentage of capture at a lower cost.
Okay, thank you. And are these people that have been interviewed aware of our situation in Harrisburg, our economy, and what our past history has been? That people have come into Harrisburg and treated the citizens like, they act like carpetbaggers and just take over and are not kind to the people that live here?
Yeah. I won't speak to their level of awareness, I think they had a general sense of awareness of the situation in Harrisburg, and we only spoke in general terms. If we were to Region Water, City Council, the community as a whole, and the reason to do it would be because we think that there can be a savings for our rates through potential other approaches and other expertise. It's hard to gauge that because we haven't even seen the engineered plans from CRW, so we don't really know what that, I'll call it, return on investment, or how effective those plans are going to be.
Okay, because as a citizen, I don't. Harrisburg get a lump sum of money like a Lotto winning, and then in the future, because these people are coming at us for more and more money, and we have no control over them. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Hunt. Anyone else, please?
Hi there, I'm Christina Costalucky. I'm at 1622 Susquehanna Street here in Harrisburg. Thanks for having us out tonight. I'm really appreciative that CRW came out and that City Council asked some really good questions. I just had a few other questions as well. I was kind of wondering about the implications for planning and zoning as well as for housing. So are there parts of the plan that talk about ways that planning and zoning can also have an impact on this? Are there ways that, which, are there any case studies in which cities have worked with housing authority, for example, to prioritize the condemned homes to be pulled down to increase the permeable surfaces, for example? Are there any end dates or dates set for increases to the stormwater fee that we know about? Are there, I saw in the strategies for decreasing the stormwater runoff, I saw things like gutters, disconnects, things like that. I didn't specifically see things like planting trees, because that is something that residential folks can work on. And it also has implications for how we, US City Council and we as residents, work on community plans. For example, Wildheart does a lot of cleanup every year, the Tri-County does a lot of cleanup. Can we also do cleanup but also emphasize things like tree planting and vegetation planting? If that's part of the plan, maybe we can work with the community to have an even bigger impact and prioritize those kinds of projects. Let's see what else. And then, is there anything, I know on the non-residential, there is the incentive, if you provide educational services, there's a way to get a reduction on your rate as well. Is there anything, the equivalent, that we could come up with for residents? For example, attending a tree planting opportunity, that maybe we work with the private sector, so something like UPMC sponsors and buys all the trees, and if you as a resident attend an event like that, you can get a reduction, because that's a way that some of our poorest citizens could still get a reduction, and it helps us get to that stormwater runoff fee.
Okay. Thank you.
So, a lot of good questions and a lot of good ideas. Since there were so many questions, can I suggest that we will submit those responses?
Yes, I would ask that you submit those questions.
And if, yeah, and if we have, if you can share contact information with the residents, we'll provide responses to City Council as well as the residents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Vishal. I live on 1319 Green Street. First off, I want to thank CRW for taking the time to come here and showing us this presentation. I liked a lot of the ideas you guys have, and I'm excited to learn more about the project moving forward. I want to thank City Council for hosting this, and I think a lot of your concerns are reasonable and good concerns that need to be fleshed out before we move forward. My friends and I have been knocking on doors and engaging with the community about the CRW proposal as well as about the possible privatization moving forward. And one thing we've discovered, no matter who we've spoken to, is that there is a strong mandate from the public here in Harrisburg to keep the water public. I can't think of anyone we've spoken to who supports privatization, who supports the sale of the assets, or who supports a lease of the assets. So I want to make sure that everyone here takes that mandate seriously, that all the decision-makers here, CRW, the City Council, the mayor, engage in a good faith discussion that's honest and open and transparent to keep the water here clean, to clean up the river, and to do it while keeping the water public, because that is clearly, I think, what most of the residents here in Harrisburg want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hello, my name is Danny. I live on Fourth Street in Harrisburg. I'd like to echo Vishal's comments, and then also, you know, if the mayor truly thinks that there are more efficient, more effective ways to address this issue, we can do that in-house. We don't need this bizarre threat of a sale. We can talk to other municipalities and other companies without hanging this over everybody, that we might sell off another important infrastructure asset of the city, leaving us wondering what's next in five years? Are we going to do this every six years? Parking, water, what's next? If we work this out ourselves, we can continue to work out problems. If we end up putting this system in private hands, we don't have the ability to collaborate like we would between public entities. Suddenly, it's someone who holds the keys and us, and they have a contract, who knows how many decades it'll be, and we'll be sitting here wondering what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hello, my name is John Winter from 1814 Third Street. CRW, thank you very much for coming here today. I am standing along with many of the other residents that have come up and spoken today. Strong supporter of keeping the water supply public. As CRW, you guys said earlier, the Deer Hard Dam is the crown jewel, and I think that such an asset that currently belongs to the city is not something we should be selling off to a private entity. Most of the council members have been talking about this being a very community-based issue, and the best way to do that, I think, is by finding community-based resolutions to that. This is something we need to figure out as a community and not by selling it off. I just don't think that's a good idea. Aside from all of that, earlier, the mayor had like a three-set questions for you guys that was starting to be answered, and Mr. Majors was very interested in the rest of the answers. I think with that being such a public discussion that the mayor was interested in, I would really appreciate if we gave a few more minutes of everyone's time to have CRW address those three questions publicly in this public forum. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I was going to do that. As the chair, I was allowing the public to speak first because you've been sitting patiently for two hours.
I appreciate it.
All right. Okay. Anyone else before we turn it back over to the mayor, I mean, turn it back over to Capital Region Water? Anyone else to my left? Okay.
Eric Smallwood, 1923 State Street. You had mentioned that there is an area of your website where you can look up the impervious areas that have already been surveyed. I didn't see that when I was looking on the website earlier. Can you please clarify where that is on the website? And also, maybe you can put up on the big screen where we can submit our questions on the website as well? Like, will we, how long would it take for us to get a response? Because I've asked a question on your website and I haven't received a response yet, and that was almost two weeks ago. So.
So we are in the process of compiling all those questions and responding as part of, we will submit the responses to the board when they close the public comment period, and responses will be made public on our website. So we will provide that to the public so that they can see, and I'll look up that map. Do you know the website off the top of your head?
Excuse me, could you come to the mic, please?
Sorry. Tanya Dearoff, Capital Region Water. CapitalRegionWater.com/cbh2o, and there's a fee finder map. You can either search by your parcel ID or your address, and it should come up.
Okay, thank you for that information. No one else for a public comment? We'll go back to address the questions for the mayor.
The first question, I can reiterate, but that's all right, we don't have to. Quickly, I can do them quick. The first question had to do with the plan.
Yeah.
Second question had to do with the fact that the current plan does not get us to 95% compliance, doesn't come anywhere close to what it would cost to get us to compliance, and basically continues to pollute. So are we to wait 100 years before we stop polluting?
No, I think I responded to that when I answered earlier that the $315 million over 20 years that gets us to 82% capture is not the end game. The model shows the compliance achieved at $600 million, was it 600? $600 million, but at our level of affordability, it would take 65 years to get to that. So.
So we're not, it's going to take 60? It's okay, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I do think people need to understand it's going to take 65 years to get us to even 85% capture.
No, 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 that's not 85%. That gets us to the four to six overflows per year.
Or to water quality, so it's.
Or, and to water quality standards. So there's a water quality model that we also implemented to show when compliance is achieved, when we meet water quality standard. So that is the, that's the $600 million over 65 years meets water quality standards.
That's mandated by EPA. That's meeting our burden with EPA.
Correct. Would you mind speaking into the mic? We can, others cannot hear what you're saying.
So I think the 20-year gets us to roughly 82%. The 65, 66-year gets us to, it's not purely on the percent capture, it's based on other requirements that EPA says, nope, you are now meeting your obligation.
So, but we don't have any assurance that EPA is going to give you any dispensation for that to be allowed to take 60 years. They could. I agree that they've agreed that we're a poor community, and we are a poor community, and that's pretty obvious to anyone. But they haven't said you can have 60 years to get to compliance. If they were to turn around and say, you have to do it within 20 years, then the cost of this plan would double.
But, but, but.
Yes, yes, it would, right? It would be 600 million instead of.
But it's tied to the level of affordability. There's two things that go hand in hand.
Yeah, but they're not saying that they're going to accept a 60-year plan because of our level of affordability. They haven't said that.
We don't know how long we will have.
Right.
But it's more than 20 years, and it's probably less than 65 years. But that's part of the negotiations is how long, what flexibility will they provide us?
What makes you think it's more than 20 years?
Because it's tied to affordability.
Not necessarily.
The conversation that we've already had with EPA to this point has said 315 million, which gets us through 20 years. The second part, the duration beyond 20, to get to the, whatever it is, higher level of capture, you know, certain number of CSOs, that's the current status of negotiation. This is a change from even two months ago, where the 315 has been, it's not in writing, you're exactly right. They're not going to give it to us in writing until we get to a point where the consent decree is written. But there's been conversation, good faith conversation, with the highest levels of EPA, with their legal counsel, that have said, the 315 and the 20 years, you're fulfilling your obligation, you meet the high burden requirements, you're good. Could they pull the rug out? Yeah, it's possible, seems highly unlikely. So to your point.
So why wouldn't we, is, good faith question, why wouldn't we set the fee after the consent decree was renegotiated to the point that we were all confident that it wasn't going to double in a short period of time, or open the door for significant increases that couldn't be anticipated at this time?
I think that, so the time that it takes, while we're kind of agreed on like the foundational elements, the detail in, and just the bureaucratic process to get to consent decree takes quite a bit of time. And the challenge is, the improvements still need to be done, and EPA expects that those improvements are still getting done. So it's not like, and it is, it's a legitimate question, why not wait until we absolutely have to be at a moment where we've received documentation that says, okay, here you go, here's the rules? We're too late. At that point, the wheels have to be in motion. It is a fair point about, like, again, we talked earlier, when does the fee get implemented? Our take has been to wait to implement the fee until the time that the consent decree would actually officially be issued. It's too late. We, I mean, you know, we're losing opportunity, we're losing increased construction costs, we're, there's a lot of, not to mention, our system continues to crumble and fail and be problematic and create.
But aren't you going to do those improvements regardless? Aren't there $100 million of projects that are going to occur in the short term, not being, not tied to the stormwater fee?
Sure, if we don't implement the stormwater fee, those will have to be covered by raising wastewater rates, or somehow trying to find some other way to finance them, which either means, you know, bond ratings, you know, additional bond issuances, which also means higher wastewater rates. The storm sewer fee is trying to provide a mechanism that is, again, more equitable to get some of that capital, that revenue, soon enough to start doing those improvements, because in the absence of that, it is a, we have to raise wastewater rates. That's really, I guess, the differentiation is, that's the only other mechanism that we have, is wastewater rates.
But in the short term, that would be less of a burden on residents if you were just raising. If you were just raising wastewater rates by, say, 10% a year, that's going to be less of a burden than the cost of the stormwater fee and the new wastewater rates combined. It would be. But it's not like wait forever, but it is, if you're making progress and if you've made such progress over the past couple of months, it sounds like, in negotiating with EPA, why not work with the city and work with the council because we are also a part of this consent decree to get the final solution in place and then collectively implement a fee that actually solves the problem rather than guessing what it might be ahead of time based on a rate study? All right, well, that was number two. And then the last question was, why isn't this just shifting the burden onto renters? That was a complicated concept, but to dumb it down, basically Christina in her comments was just saying, well, this, our poorest residents, why don't we make it possible for them to plant a tree and then that could, that could be a credit towards, well, our poorest residents don't own property. So our poorest residents are renters. Our poorest residents don't have the ability to change the fee which is assessed to their property. This is going to be something which is going to be passed on to them through the landlord or through the property owner. And if you go to your pie charts, can we go to the pie chart, which has the number of, you know, residential versus non-residential versus, what I'm saying is that the majority of our population, all of our renters are in the orange. They're in other non-residential, yes.
That's commercial.
That's commercial and industrial.
And it is also including apartment complexes.
Large apartments.
Yes.
Right.
Exactly. So...
But that's not the majority of our residents either.
I would, if you look at that pie chart, I think it's a much larger number than you, perhaps you're thinking. Do we know what that number is? Yeah. And how do you define large? Is it, is it as the city defines non-residential, which is four units or more?
Well, you...
I guess basically how are you defining residential versus commercial? Because, you know, in my house is zoned residential, but I get to also conduct business and, but nothing, either for insurance, whatever, nothing is commercial because it's, there's no commercial. The use is not...
It's going to be multi-units above a certain size, I would think.
So I think, oh, sorry, y'all, please.
I was just going to say, one point is that the stormwater fee, when you look at a cost per unit of impervious area, is the same regardless of whether you're, whether you're a public entity, whether you're a commercial customer, whether you're an industrial customer, whether you are a residential customer. The only caveat is, is that because there's so many residential properties, we have grouped them into those three tiers that I mentioned and that grouping is a common way to do that. It reduces administrative burden.
Mayor, mayor, hey, sorry, it's just getting in the way. I'm running this, okay? I'm running this. Mayor, please give him the opportunity to speak.
So the other, the other comment was if you have, if you have a number of renters in an apartment building, aren't they going to be disproportionately charged for stormwater fee? And the way that would work is, let's say you have a property that has 50,000 square foot, it's an apartment complex with 50,000 square foot of impervious area, but they have, there's 100 apartment units. That 50,000 impervious area corresponds to a charge that gets distributed 100 ways. So I think it's a broad statement to say that in that situation, the tenant is going to get hurt. We got to look at, we got to look at that and we will look at that in more detail. But I am, I'm, you know, conceptually, I think that that's not going to be an overburdening of tenant dwellers more than it would be someone who's in a single-family home.
And we can pull out some of that information as examples and provide it to the City Council.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And just a point of clarification, because maybe I'm wrong and I don't understand it, but it seems to me that a 2,200 square foot residence home is going to be paying $74 a year and a 2,200 dollar, 2,200 impervious square foot non-residential home is going to be paying 163. And so it is not true that they're paying the same rate. The $74 for residents is essentially subsidized and the disproportionate burden is essentially falling on others. You're the rate specialist, but that's just true, right?
I think, John, so we've got, I put that slide up just for that comparison. So if you look at the bottom line in both the residential table and the non-residential table, so to your point, Mr. Mayor, so the residential table says, and again, remember also, these are ranges. So for the residential, it's between a certain square footage. It's not saying, hey, you know, between 400 and 700, this is, it's kind of like a bell curve, right? Between 400, 700 square feet, it's half the flat feet. The larger majority is in the middle, the 701 and the 2,200, wherever you fall in there, you're the flat feet, right? And then above the 2,200 is calculated based on your total impervious area. But now the non-residential, greater than 700 square feet, so it's actually a lower threshold on the non-residential, but it's the same fee per impervious area. So they're both calculated the same. The threshold's lower because on non-residential, it starts at 700, but a residential, it starts at 2,201.
I don't think they're both calculated the same because, and granted, I chose one that was stronger for my argument by choosing the 2,200, but the 2,200 is a flat fee and the other is a fee based on square footage. So they're not calculated the same. The flat fee essentially subsidize, is subsidized and just as you could have two residential houses right next to each other, one has 2,200, one has 2,210, the 2,210 is paying $163, the 2,200 is paying 74. Likewise, all of the multi-unit apartment buildings that are, anything above 700 are paying the calculation based on the $6.15 per thousand per month. So that is the shift to the renter and it is unquestionable that we are subsidizing the single, you know, family property owner who has a home in that, in that range, partly because I think we're, you know, we're recognizing that that's a constituency that we, we're looking to appeal to. But honestly, the poorest of Harrisburg are not that constituency and the people who are going to feel it the most are not that constituency and it does seem genuinely unfair to subsidize it in that manner.
Mayor, can I just ask...
Excuse me, Ms. Daniels and Ms. Charlotte, go ahead, please, and then Ms. Daniels.
Can I, can I just ask the mayor, would you agree that the majority of renters, and I understand that there are a lot of renters in Harrisburg, would you agree that the majority of renters don't live in large apartment buildings but in typical residential row homes that have been split two or three times into apartments?
I can tell you, it depends on where you're doing the cutoff and I was genuinely asking you how you were doing the cutoff. I know from a, from a, when we used to have combined billing, we were, I believe, assuming anything that was four units or more was non-residential and anything that was three units or less was residential. I don't know where you're doing the cutoff, so where is the cutoff?
Right.
Answer that and then I'll tell you if I think it's the majority.
If it's zoned as residential unit, it is still being charged based on the residential fee. We don't do it by number of units. If there's four units in a building but is zoned residential, it now becomes commercial. We don't do it that way.
Okay. Ms. Daniels?
No, I guess I'm just trying to figure like your point because when I think of the largest landlords, they have a smaller area of impervious surfaces because it's a ton of...
That's right.
Many, many, yes.
So I don't know mathematically where...
That's why I suggested that we will pull some examples and provide it to City Council.
Yeah, I think that would be really, because I'm trying to do the math and it just doesn't really make sense. And then like our poorest are really, are in, uninhabited units that are usually the single homes and...
Split up into several units, yes.
Okay.
I think that's, yeah, that's agreeable. We can provide some examples, we'll try to look for a good cross-section and say, look, we've run the numbers to see, is there a...
And do it demographically throughout the city of Harrisburg, okay? So that you can give us, you know, example of all the areas and even with some of the housing units that has structures of eight or nine floors.
Yep.
Apartment buildings, okay. Mayor, are you done? Is that the last question?
Yes, it was merely, it wasn't just the number, it was just also an understanding that in those instances, those tenants are just going to have the costs passed on to them. They don't have any ability to really mitigate those costs in a way that other property owners do and that has to be sort of taken into account too.
Okay, thank you. Anything else additional from you, Charlotte? Okay, we want to thank you for your time and your effort and the information. We look forward to receiving all the information that we requested and also setting up an annual meeting with you or even quarterly, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.